I use a hundred millimeter macro. That's why I take all these pictures with a hundred mill. We define both the stationary and that's a bad thing. Now with yours, that's a process. So we're actually making them under what time to work on. They're probably stretched about a hundred forty millimeter. But I have that and a ring light. So a ring light actually goes home in itself. What I use it, I actually hold it in my hand. So when you can take it, you can take a picture of that. If you move it, then you get a shadow of this thing. But I started with the foot. With that hundred foot frame of bugs sitting around the house? If that's just good for you.
All right, if everybody's ready, we're gonna call this meeting to order. The June eighth city council meeting at the gymnasium. I would also like to make a mention, the last thirty minutes, we've had a reception for Mr. Calvin Neesmith, who is moving over to EOM, so he'll no longer be directly employed by the city, but he's still working with us and has served us for thirty-two years. A little bit later, we're gonna do a proclamation honoring him. But we had numerous previous Guyton celebrities, including Mayor Doug Watts, Mayor Jeff Laris, who stopped by a little while ago, Councilman Franklin Goldwire has stopped by as well, and so many other familiar faces, including our current staff and police department, who all love and respect Mr. Calvin a lot. So we, I will say more later, but once again, thank you for all you do for us every day. At this time, Mr. Lee is gonna offer our invocation, and then we will all join together and do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Governor, follow me. Thank you for allowing us to come together one more time and do the work of the citizens of Guyton, Georgia. We thank you for everybody that here today bless each and everyone that's on their way, Jesus. We ask you to guide us and teach us, Jesus, to work together as one. And Jesus, we ask you in your son's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I have a motion from Councilman Reeser, a second from Councilwoman Palot. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Consideration to approve minutes of meetings, Tuesday, May eleventh, seven P M, city council meeting. I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion and a second, motion from Councilman Reeser and a second from Councilwoman Palot. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minute stand approved. At this time, we'll move on to reports from staff or committees. Police Department, Chief Jane Perlettic.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Can be brief. Basically, for the police department, last month, four hundred and ninety-six calls. We had over twenty-one incidents, solved twenty of those incidents, thirty-nine supplementals, four arrests, and twenty-six tickets. Go into another information also, we were able, myself and Lieutenant Coppola, to go to Valdosta, Georgia, and speak to the U.S. Marshal, or the Marshal Service they have. Marshal being the code enforcement for the city. They were able to sit down with us for about four or five hours and go over various things that they've had in their last fourteen years' history. And they gave us what we commonly refer to in our technology as a go-by. I've sent a copy of that over to our attorney's office, to Brian, he's reviewed over it, so we're ready. We were able to find a thirty-five millimeter and a digital camera in the police department that unbeknownst us, we had. So we're gonna start with all the blighted houses and follow through with that. In the last couple of weeks, we have been noticing that there are some cleanup going on throughout the neighborhood. And if you have a chance to drive to the city, please take a look. A lot of houses are being boarded up, grass is being cut, but that in no way negates the idea that we're going to go forward. I entertain any questions the council or the mayor have at this present time, please.
I'm excited to see what's going on with the Neighborhood Watch program. I know we've got that first get-together this Saturday, and I'm hoping the community for that neighborhood comes out and meets our officers and learns more about how they can help protect their area. I'm excited about that. And any other neighborhoods in our community that are interested in starting a Neighborhood Watch program, please reach out to Chief Jane Perlettic, and we will help.
Absolutely. We passed our flyers to the neighborhood, got a lot of good positives from the neighborhood itself. These hours are gonna be from eleven until about one or two, somewhere around that time. And we're gonna have a nicely entertaining evening, and hopefully all the neighbors can get together, meet the local law enforcement officers, and discuss whatever their needs have been. From the last meeting we had on the second of June, we had a pretty decent turnout, and so far, everybody in the neighborhood has been happy. And Mr. John actually made a comment, he's seen a seventy-five percent change, which is what we like. And we're gonna go forward until we get a hundred percent. So we thank our citizens for being part of this, and also the city council, the mayor, for allowing us to go forward. And there are gonna be some things in the future we'll bring to the council, such as lights being changed out and et cetera, and also grass and limbs being cut around the area. But right now, the neighborhood's cleaning up completely. We had an incident one about Friday or so ago, where individuals had a graduation party. Everybody's real quiet, there was not a single bit of noise whatsoever. We went by and we thanked them, and they feel the same thing. Everybody likes the Neighborhood Watch signs, because we are working together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir, it's gonna be this Saturday, the twelfth of June, out of the park, from eleven to two. We'll be marking off a couple of the roads, and I'll be having a packet put together for the interim city manager, Mr. Mike, to inspect probably this week. So we'll make everybody aware of it. Thank you so very much.
All right, moving on. Chief Clint Hodges, Fire Department. Excellent meeting today regarding the hurricane, by the way. I didn't get a chance to see you afterwards, but I think it's a good, good start.
Thank you. For the month of May, we ran three hundred and seventy-seven calls countywide, of which there was seventeen within city limits, which is actually a little bit down. Only eight medical calls, four fire alarms, three public assists, one brush fire, and one accident, but there was no injuries involved. Countywide, the number of significant incidents was up, unfortunately, none of those actually did occur within the city limits.
Any questions for Chief Hodges? Thank you, sir. We appreciate all you do. Looking forward to that meeting on the twenty-fourth. All right, EOM Public Works.
Good evening. We had a pretty typical month in the month of April, with a hundred and eighty-five completed total work orders. The only one thing that I wanna point out with a little bit of discrepancy is, as Councilman Reeser pointed out earlier, while we were speaking, is the water produced. We produced around eleven million gallons. There's about a three million gallon discrepancy between what we treated in the plant versus what we produced. And the best I can come up with is that that was irrigation. We were not aware of any major leaks, but what we are aware of, there was about twenty-five days in the month where we did not have any rain. So that was obviously gonna create more of a need. I don't suspect we're gonna have the same problem this month. Other than that, everything was pretty typical, and of course, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Anything interesting with the Public Works transition? Anything of note? I've seen you all on the main drag pulling dirt and spraying weeds.
Everything's going great so far.
And thanks for sending Adam over today for city hall and those.
He was able to get that freed up for you.
We're gonna have to replace both of those units, they are full of calcium.
Oh, okay. Well, what if nothing helped with that?
He snaked the line, he did everything, checked it out, and I appreciate his service. Johnny on the spot, or Adam on the spot, right?
I'll make sure he knows.
All right, any other questions for EOM? Moving on to Historical Commission. Do y'all have anything tonight, Ms. Lucy?
Good evening, council, mayor, citizens of Guyton. Nothing new, just a reminder that on Thursday, June seventeenth, we will be doing the social downs in front of the caboose. You'll have the cooler ice that you had last time, and we ask that everyone come out of the room. Maybe you'll have some entertainment while there.
You might be able to convince me to strum a little.
Ah, okay. And also, I'd like to thank Gina and everyone who got the flags going, it was very beautiful. Hopefully, by the Fourth of July, we'll have some more children, the spaces that were not covered. And I hope that you look into the light holes for the Christmas decorations.
I will make a note, and we can look into that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. As there was no planning and zoning meet last week, I don't believe Mr. Harden has anything for us, so at this time, we will move on to public comments. Public comments will be limited to agenda items only. As there appears to be no public comments, at this time, we will move on to one of my favorite things to do, proclamation. Tonight, we are honoring Mr. Calvin Neesmith. Mr. Neesmith has served with us for a considerable amount of time, I believe thirty-two years at last count. And so at this time, I would like to issue this proclamation. Honoring Calvin Neesmith for his years of service to the citizens of Guyton, June twenty-twenty-one, Guyton, Georgia. Whereas Calvin Neesmith began his extensive career with Guyton in August of nineteen eighty-nine, and whereas Calvin Neesmith performed numerous functions for the city during those thirty-two years, including water and sewer maintenance, utility line location, sanitation, street maintenance, building maintenance, construction, and landscaping. And whereas Calvin Neesmith served as a faithful public servant under numerous mayors and council members of Guyton. And whereas Calvin Neesmith is known throughout Guyton and Effingham County as a friend to all and willing to help in any situation. And whereas Calvin Neesmith, through his diligent work, has forever shaped our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council members of the city of Guyton do hereby thank Calvin Neesmith for his years of service to the city and its citizens on this eighth day of June, twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Calvin?
Thank you, sir. I just wanna thank everybody. It's been a, it's a great job, and I've enjoyed so many, so many years doing it, and I thank y'all from the bottom of my heart.
I just hope I can still do as much up and down and bending and moving and shaking as you do when I'm that age.
Yes, sir. Now, I've got these gems, so we do the real deal.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the second reading and consideration to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash oh four regarding the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two budget. And my computer is shut off. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion as we consider this ordinance read in, and I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash oh four. I have a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, consideration to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one dash oh three regarding employee handbook. Any questions or concerns?
Um, mayor, I want to, we have been through this and looked over it, but I kinda wanna put it on hold until we go where I saw it. Five right to forty-five.
Understandable, but as the charter will not be, even if we approved one today, it wouldn't be in effect until next year at the earliest when legislation does. We're really shorting, shorting our staff from having that tool. No, it has to go before the legislature. Like, we can approve it all we want to, but the charter is not law for the city of Guyton until it is approved by the legislature.
I understand that concern. I did spend a fair amount of time reviewing the employee handbook. I think it's very well-written, I think it's professional, I think it's objective. I think it's a fair policy that will allow us to be professional with our employee group and move forward in positive direction. I think it's well-done by Ms. Kirk. I think she did a great job. I look forward to having her as a resource if we need her. I really didn't see any glaring issues with it, so I think it's a well-written document that we should support and give our employees the benefit of having a working document that they can refer to in situations where they have questions or issues.
Before we dug too deep into it as well, we, the, if we're going to the city manager form of government, the changes in that document are easily, I mean, you could basically Ctrl+F, look for the word mayor, and replace it with city manager. So it's not as significant as your changes, just as it shows where the chain of command changes. So it's not really a, we'll be able to pass that by resolution the day after the charter goes into effect.
Well, I understand, but I was kinda concerned because, you know, I just wanted to know exactly, you know, where we were going to go in the charter, maybe have like a rough draft of the charter, look at the charter, and look at the handbook, employee handbook, and then say, okay, next month, or I don't know when he would be finished with it, you know, going through everything, and say, okay, it looks like it's going to be coinciding with one another, it's nothing different. So let's go on. Because as I think before, we've had a problem with the handbook that we currently have with, and how it looks with the charter, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so that's why I was, that's, that was where my thinking was going.
I do still believe we need to pass this resolution, as the handbook is complete, and there's not a negative to it. It's been done by a professional in terms of someone who does this for a living, and it will give our future city manager, as well as future staff, the ability to use all the forms related to it, the performance evaluations form, which raises could be based on, and stuff like that. So I would encourage us to approve this resolution at this time.
I thought on our handbook, as you said, we were going to city manager form of government. And I thought at our workshop, we spoke on doing a council form of government, as well as some of the terms in here in this new handbook that are like the time that, I think we discussed time off and overtime, where she's running it together, which, are we still gonna discuss that, or how are we gonna do that, or are we gonna leave it just like it is?
I'm seeking to have this approved tonight as is, as this is the, the expert we have employed and spent significant funds on has said this is the way it is done in twenty-twenty-one. The employees have been asked and interviewed in terms of what would they like to see as far as their PTO. I have even, I did not agree with us allowing for rollover time. I felt that that unnecessarily complicated it and discouraged us from them using their time off. But I, of course, have ceded on that and allowed for forty hours of rollover each year. I think this is as good a handbook as we're going to get, and we need to use these funds wisely and give our staff the tools they need.
I'm, I still don't agree with it running continuous together. I think we ought to do it separate, as in vacation time is separate, sick leave time, and your FMLA time, which should be separate. And I don't agree to that part of this handbook, so I'm not a...
So one item on the handbook?
That I don't agree with at all, and that would, if that's the case, I think we should just leave the handbook like it is, because I don't agree with that.
I think not taking the advice of the expert is an error, but at this time, is there any other discussion?
I would disagree. I think the PTO gives our employees the latitude to have a little freedom. I think during my tenure, we've had situations where maybe someone may perhaps have abused their sick time. And I think the PTO is a common practice these days. It gives our employees some freedom in terms of if they're gonna be, if they wanna take a day, they can take a day. They don't have to consider whether or not they have vacation time, or if they have to work the system as it might be. So I think the PTO gives, gives our folks some credibility that says, hey, if, if you wanna take some personal time, you can take some time off, and you don't have to, you know, consider it vacation or consider it sick time. I think the FMLA is separate. I think that's all in there, and there's a lot of information. I've reviewed the whole thing, and it's very thorough. So I, I agree that we need to rely on the professional, 'cause I, you know, I run a business, and it's, it's difficult to, to consider all the HR issues that could arise. And I think this, Ms. Kirk has done a very good job. I mean, this is like a seventy-page document. That's, it's not only PTO, to me, that's a small part of it, but you've got situat, you've got material in here that addresses if there's a conflict, what you do, how do you elevate that conflict if you're, if it's not resolved? You've got evaluation material in here, so that people can, can continue to progress in their, in their role. You've got directives for our department heads and what they should be doing to bring our folks along, so that they're not just languishing and not getting the attention that they need. So I really think it's a great document. And I agree that if, if, if there is a need to amend anything, I, I think, just like our old document, we can amend that. We can change the type of government that we have, or if we wanna change, I mean, there's silly stuff in there like dress code. Maybe we wanna tweak that because of how that works. The other thing this also addresses is real time. I mean, it, it addresses telecommuting, like, this whole thing that we just went through, and we had to discuss, are we gonna let our folks work out of the office? That's in this policy. I mean, it's, I, I was very impressed with the material and the effort that went into it. So I, I think we should give our employees the ability to rely on a document that's been updated. And like has been said, we have spent a fair amount of money to, to create this document. I think it would be wise to, to approve it.
FMLA can also be run, current with that PTO time. If we're gonna do it, something that can be ran with that. So when they run out of sick leave time, of PTO time, they're out. So if you run it individually, they have something to back them up. If they run out of vacation time, sick leave time, the FMLA is gonna protect them. All we have to write as this board here to put it all in one, which that's what she's trying to do, and it don't protect them. So when they run out of the eighty hours of time, that is it. Once they call in that next day, they can either go for termination or suspended. How will we choose to do that?
I think there's a lot of latitude. I think there's the FMLA, there's, if there's a situation where someone has some sort of military leave, there's, there's a request that can be made for personal time off. Let's just say they're out of PTO, and they're out of FMLA, but they still need personal leave. There's latitude in this policy, in this document that says they can request it. Obviously, you can't open it up and say, you know, everybody gets whatever they need, but there is a lot of flexibility in the plan that we, that would give our city manager the ability to, to be fair, as opposed to making the policy as they go.
But if it's fair, it's documented when they don't have anything.
It's a responsibility for the department head to doc, to, to document things like absences, when they're absent, if it, if it's not a PTO, and they're just absent for some other reason. That needs to be documented, and that's specified in this, in this, in this plan.
Okay, I was saying, document, I was saying, basically, if they're out of sick leave or anything like that, they do not get paid if they're out. That's, you know, document the case.
Yeah, I understand. I, I've read it, I'm not the expert here, but I think it, it's very specific about what the actions of the city manager or the department head, which would be the police chief, what they can do, and I think that's part of it. They, they won't get paid if they're out of PTO, or...
PTO is good and it's bad, because you could abuse the PTO, because just like we need to be a limit on, some people could just say, well, I'm gonna stay home today and use it for PTO. Where he, they didn't make no arrangement with the supervisor or nothing like that.
I think, I think they do have to give them two days.
They didn't make arrangement with the supervisor or nothing like that. And so they could keep on doing that, and then the city goes slacking because they didn't know, make arrangement for them to be off. So we got to have a limit of, of saying like, you can't miss seven, call in seven times in a year, or three times or whatever. You got to have a limit on that.
There is a whole section, I'm sorry, I didn't, I apologize. The, the absenteeism section covers that as far as giving the department head the ability, if there's an issue with habitual abuse of that system. Plus, there's that three days, it's three days and a doctor's note, right?
That's correct.
So I mean, there is that, but there is that concern of if you've got that employee that lays out one day this week, and then one day this week, and then one day this week. But that's covered in a different section where it would be addressed with a verbal, which has a form which documents it as well as then if it continues, if the behavior continues, then you can address it through the performance evaluation.
Yeah, it's the same thing. If the employee come to work and he wanna get off, they got to get off, four hours there. All right, is we gonna use this, let them off, or are we gonna use them half of their PTO? Is you keep doing something like that, we running a company, we is not running this, something for a person to come to work, half of the day, and say, well, I'm gonna go to my supervisor and say, I'm gonna be off this week right here, four hours or something. I got a punk man, everything, you look around, this person got a punk man, he's up somewhere. I mean, is we gonna use that for their PTO when they get off from the half day?
If they're wanting to be paid for it, I mean, if they're wanting to, if they're an hourly employee and not a salaried employee, or what is it, exempt and non-exempt?
Yeah, but there's a limit. Like, for the first two years, you get like ten days. I mean, it's not unlimited. And then after two years, you get, I don't know, fifteen days. I think it's graduated, and then when you've been here as long as Calvin, you, you know, you got a lot of time to take off. But there is, there is a scaled amount of days that can be claimed. So yeah, if they wanna take that half a day off, they can, but they are going to eat into their allotted time off. And my experience, when I had this in a job, it was, I was very protective of it. I wanted to take my time when I wanted to take it, and it wasn't gonna be four hours sharing four hours there. But everybody's different, you know, some people wanna take it all at once.
Any further discussion? All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one dash oh three regarding the employee handbook. I have a motion from Councilman Reeser. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All right, I will second it for lack of a second. There is a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 2021-03 regarding the employee handbook. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Did you oppose as well? Motion fails. Moving on to Item D. Consideration to approve hiring two new police officers. As we all know, in the budget we just passed, we included funds to hire two new police officers. Chief Politic is requesting that we give him the ability to start that process. Any questions or concerns?
For the police hire, do we require a certain amount of years of experience?
With Mayor and Council's permission, do you respond, please? In the state of Georgia, for a police officer to work, he's got to be certified under Georgia Police Officer Statistical Council. For somebody to come to work in the past, we have not, the city has not sent somebody to the police academy. That can be anywhere from twelve to sixteen weeks. We don't look for asking for a number of years for an individual. Right now, we have applicants that have come in, pretty decent applicants, and we would like to have the opportunity to look at these folks and possibly bring them in, in the same philosophy that I have for the other two officers that we've brought in and we've done pretty well on. Only thing extra would be the equipment that we need, that we have to supply new equipment versus in the past, we were able to, as I commonly refer to it, Frankenstein, we're able to use other items from in the past for our vehicles. That's something else to entertain. I'd like the permission to go forward so we can start doing interviewing. Right now, an academy class has already graduated, and let me tell you, just driving back from Lowndes County, there's agencies offering two to five thousand dollar sign-on bonus at this present time. Funny enough, we passed by a McDonald's, and McDonald's was offering a five hundred dollar sign-in bonus. So Councilman Mayor, I'd like your permission to go ahead so we can start interviewing folks. It's going to take a period of time to get these individuals trained to the standard that we want to be for all of our citizens. So with that, I please ask you to give us permission to go forward. Entertained any questions?
Yeah, is you guys for two offices, did you go on twenty-four seven?
The idea would be to go twenty-four seven. Once we get our personnel trained properly, and see where our assessment is for our time. A lot of times, between the hours of four and six o'clock, or four and seven o'clock in the morning, there's not that much, but we have other additional activities going to go. So to answer that question, once my personnel are trained properly, would be the idea to go twenty-four seven, and I'll bring that in front of the city council at that time and discuss with you on the hours versus the operation of the police department here in our meeting.
As right now, I mean, you said if you were bringing forward to the city council, well, I wouldn't approve, given you on two more officers, you ain't gonna go twenty-four seven. Because I don't need no, but we don't need nobody sitting on these thumb drives.
That was my exact comment.
If I may, we just wanted to clarify, so when, how long does it take to train one? I knew it surprised me.
Six to eight to twelve weeks, depending on the person's time and grade.
Because when he got done and been, I was just like, all right, when's the change? And he goes, they got to train. And I didn't realize it took...
Mr. Lee, your answer would be, yes, we want to be twenty-four seven.
Absolutely.
Yes, we want to be. But we also want to look at the crime statistical, now sedate, and come back and be able to let you know. Like you said, we don't need anybody sitting on a thumb drive. We need work, and we need their citizens protected, and we need individuals patrolling. We don't need to hire somebody asleep. We don't do that. This is the police department.
Yeah.
Okay? Yes, so what happens is, once a police officer finishes the academy, if they're a new officer or a regular, they have to be trained in our ways, our computer system, our patrolling technique, our arrest procedures, our paperwork, things like that. There's a lot to training officer. They just don't come out and hand us a set of keys anymore. Those days are long gone because of liability.
Don't we also have a certain amount of time they spend on road with our current officers? And, because I remember they did some of the laser training in my parking lot.
Yes, sir, absolutely. What happens, when an officer comes to work for us, first thing we do, we'll put them with an FTO, field training officer. Then we'll move them around from shift to shift. That way, they have an ability from each one, the officers, and they draw, as I say, put it to the trick bag. They draw from each officer, they see what different officers do. One officer makes traffic stops a certain way, one officer affects going checking buildings a certain way. They take all this information, they bring it together, and they start meeting the people. Because with the writing along with the officer for the training period, we're introducing them to the public, and that's how we get to know them. And then after that period of time, the officer's shadowed, they're cut loose, but we follow behind them. We respond to the calls, we carry on the calls, until we feel proper that they're able to be cut loose. And there's a procedure on each one. They will be evaluated weekly or bi-weekly. They'll have reports, good, bad, negative, anything we need to reframe on, rechange or re-rechange on that. And then when they're cut loose and they're shadowed, we do the same thing, until they're finally cut loose. And when they're finally cut loose, we still continue to do that. The training continues each and every day. It's just not, here's a set of keys, like when I started, hey, here you're a police, raise your right hand, here's a set of keys. Those days are long gone because of liability. We want our officers trained to the proper standard, and we want to know the public and see the public. That way, when they get off on the rail, they're able to handle what they need handled. And the idea, and I'll go over through the semantics later on, is we can overlap shifts. One officer on a shift is very, very difficult. If you all have read the newspaper and things like that, various places, officers have been shot, new officers. One comes to mind is Adele, officer took five rounds. We want our officers to be protected with the proper equipment, and we want to overlap so that we have that. And you're right, Mr. Lee, we don't need thumb drives. I don't know what's happened in the past, but we're not having that in the presence.
Do we have a call for service?
Pardon me, sir?
Do we have a call for service?
Like, call for service?
Cars.
Cars. No, sir, I'm looking into that already, I'm already looking into that.
Those are approved in the SPOS budget section of the budget we just passed.
Already, I already looked into that, and equipment, I'm getting pricing on equipment too, because we're going to have to put new equipment in these cars. In the past, when I was here, we were able to borrow this, and borrow this, and borrow this, so I'm getting the price risk on that, and we're working it. Lieutenant and I have been working on that for the last couple of weeks. So we are, there, I can give you some prices on one car right now, I can give you some on, you know, a couple others. We won't happen to share that with you later time if you need. But yeah, we are going to need equipment, we're going to need bulletproof vests, we're going to need uniforms. We're adding to our officers, not taking away. We're adding to it. We really are. So that, that's what we're looking at in the future, completely, and keeping the same line, sir.
The grant we received last year, are we eligible for that again with our insurance provider for the, was it the vests?
Yes, sir.
We got the vest free and something else?
We got, we got approximately, close to six thousand dollars. We got bulletproof vest, and we got a camera system for the security for the police department. And I'm hoping to go after that again, see if we have it. I've been trying to keep up with the paperwork on that, being part of GMA, and we're in for a pretty bit, we might be getting the same amount. The vest, somewhere between seven to eight hundred dollars is what it is. And officers that get out of the academy or come here, they don't bring their own equipment. They're really not, we supply the equipment. That way, we know it works proper. Any other questions, please? Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any further discussion with council? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve hiring two new police officers. Second. Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Reeser. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E. Consideration to approve Resolution 2021-04 regarding initiating a voter referendum to authorize issuance of licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits. This resolution would put on our ballot for this November, to the voters, the ability to decide if they want alcohol sales in the city of Guyton as far as package stores. I personally feel it's a good idea to put this to the voters and allow them to decide. I see some positives, I see some negatives. I mean, positives are, a lot of folks are buying that. I've had drank in my life, shocker, but at the end of the day, my money is spent elsewhere besides Kim's. So it's, there's a point for that, but then at the same time, I mean, if the citizens don't want that in their city, that is absolutely up to them. I like this because it puts this in their hand, and they can make that decision. Any council discussion?
Yeah, assuming we do this, at what point does the city decide the sort of rules, I guess you'd say, like what we're going to allow, where we're going to allow it? And that might be a legal question, but does the city, if this referendum were to be on the ballot and it passes, does the city then have the ability to say, we're going to move forward with this under these parameters, like distance from churches and schools and those types of things? Or is it a one and done, we said yes, and you got to do it under certain rules?
The short answer to the question would be, it would set in motion decisions that would need to be effectuated, likely involving ordinances and other effects. It would not simply be the referendum saying yes. You need to then take steps to effectuate it. And it would be very doable, I just couldn't give you the exact list right now. We want to go through the code section and come up with the exact ways to effectuate what the voters do or have approved.
So the city could, or the referendum could say, yes, our citizens want that, then this board has the ability to create the parameters that we would allow. If we did, I guess the council could, let's just say the referendum passed, the council still has the ability, correct, to say, we're going to do this or not do this? I mean, we're acting on the best interest of the citizens, right?
That's correct, and we want to put a new trace on how the referendum is ordered, but quick answer is yes.
All right, at this time, I'll call for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-04 regarding initiating a voter referendum to authorize issuance of licenses for the package sale of distilled spirits. I have a motion from Councilman Johnson, a second from Councilman Reeser. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item F. Consideration to approve the Right Spot contract. Mr. Eskey, do you have anything for this?
Yes, sir. The...
Jenna, make a note for me to buy another set of microphones. We've been doing this long enough, I think we can blow that extra seventy-nine bucks.
Right Spot, as I think all, everybody on the council knows, is our geographic system where for mapping the city, from overhead photography. The initial, annual fee is forty-eight hundred dollars. We have budgeted for a thousand dollars a month, or twelve thousand dollars for the year beyond that initial, uh, membership.
Charlie has left us, but EOM also uses Right Spot on a daily basis. It was a huge assistance for me as far as working through the zoning codes, and I use it rather regularly, helping citizens when I was briefly acting city manager. So I, I see it being a good tool. I believe the interim city clerk in her water role used it as well. Any further discussion or questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Right Spot contract. I have a motion from Councilman Reeser, a second from Councilwoman Polot. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration to approve city manager to hire summer interns. Councilwoman Polot, did you have anything more for that?
No. Uh, the workforce, she did not call me. If she did, I may have missed the call, but she didn't leave a message, so, you know, I'm still going to work in getting in contact with them.
I worded it this way, because I thought it'd be good to allow us to move forward quickly, if anyone has anyone who's interested in a part-time summer internship job, or if council knows of anyone, if we could imbue the city manager with the ability to hire them. I feel Mike is very capable, he's done this kind of plan before in Washington, and I'd like to just give him the ability to do that if we have anyone interested. I know City Hall could benefit from a couple of paper shufflers who want to dig into this, that, and clean this. And also, EOM is being turned loose on our, the massive amount of maps and documents like that, so they can get all that put in the Right Spot. I know an extra set of hands would help them as well, and be really good experience for someone, a teenager who's considering a job in politics, or policy, or government. It can be great exposure. It could run them away completely, but I think this is a good plan and a good idea, and I'd like to see it happen, if we can make it happen. Any further discussion regarding this, or concerns? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve city manager to hire summer interns. Motion from Councilwoman Polot, second from Councilman Reeser. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, Mike. Item H. Consideration to approve expenditure for city council retirement plan study. I've had time to read up on this and look into it more, as well as Mr. Eskey has been in touch, and Mr. Johnson have been in touch with who with GMA? I can't remember, Marlena? Michelle Warner, I'm sorry. This expenditure would be for twelve hundred dollars to research the cost of a retirement plan for council. This would not be approving it until we get the, the long-term cost for it. I have read over this amended checklist, and Ms. Warner and Mike ran through it today with our existing ordinance for retirement plan for employees. This form as is, is in conflict with a significant amount of it. I would personally like a little more time for us all to get to figure out exactly what we would like to see, as far as whether or not we want to allow people to opt in and opt out. I think that wouldn't be the worst idea in the world, for everyone to be kind of polled and see where we come back to as, as far as this type of expenditure. Any council discussion regarding this?
I would just make a comment that I'm not sure that this would be wise for the city to move in this direction. I think it creates a long-term obligation for the city. In my review of this, theoretically, every four years, we could have a complete turnover on this council. However, those five people that had previously served would potentially be entitled to some sort of a defined benefit plan. And if you extrapolate that over ten, twenty, thirty years, you're creating a large item in your budget that will be something that you have to plan around, and it will continue to grow as more people serve. In my estimate, my personal estimate is, we serve for the greater good of Guyton as opposed to a personal benefit. I totally understand our employees receiving this type of benefit, because they're putting in many years of service for the city. This, for us, is more of a volunteer effort, a side hustle, if you will, to serve our citizens. And being compensated beyond just our monthly salary, if that's what it is, is more than I think we should be budgeting for, or spending the citizens' money for. So I don't think it's a wise use of our citizens' money.
I think what works out, the folks that have served the past time, and long years, they're not, they don't receive that unless they get back on city council. Then it's, from there, they would add, they would get paid for what they already done. But if they're not on council, you don't get it, only the ones that are serving.
Correct, I understand, but I'm saying, if we were to do something like this, fast forward twenty years from now, everyone who's served in that last twenty years would potentially be entitled to some retirement benefit. And then fast forward another twenty years, you've got even more. It's like this ballooning obligation of the city to continue to pay for retirement, or in my estimate, it's more of a part-time volunteer effort, not a, not a job that would merit a retirement package. So I think it is an obligation that the city would bear, and when I look at the list of other cities that do it, Springfield doesn't do it, Rincon does do it, but there are a lot of cities that do not do it, and again, I just don't think it's a wise use of citizens' money.
I look down that line, and I see a lot of cities that does it and don't do it, but it's, it is actually a second job for a lot of us, because we spend more time here, a lot of time here, going and coming. So that's how I see it.
I would like to ask for us to be able to take another month on this, and let everyone respond to Mike, and look at the amended checklist, to see if there's things that they would like to see changed, or allow him to go over it with us individually. As Ms. Williams said, there was certain things in our existing employee retirement plan that would make the one Mr. Sawyer filled out incorrect. I would like to... Uh, we'd like to see no action taken on this, but at this time, are there any motions? I have a motion from Councilman Johnson to accept the city council retirement plan study, and a second from Councilman Lee. Can I ask for clarification, is this to approve the expenditure for this study? Twelve hundred dollars. There is a motion on the floor. Can we let this motion fail for the time being, and, and address Ms. Palote's question? Or do you want it to go to a vote, Mr. Johnson? We can return to this motion, I'd just like to answer her questions. I wanna let this motion fail, and then we can remake the motion after we address Ms. Palote's questions, and let Mr. Esku.
Yes, I may procedurally amend, or either you can still let this move forward, or withdraw, and put it back on the table before you can get to Ms. Palote.
You can make this motion again, but I need to address Ms. Palote. Can I let it- Alright, motion fails at this time. Uh, Mr. Esku, Ms. Palote has a question, I think you'd best address it.
I wanted to know what information that you needed to do before we needed to proceed to pay out this money.
What will happen is, if we notify GMA that we wish to do the, uh, add elected officials to the retirement, checklist is included in your package, and it's worded, these are mental occasions, and clarify. First thing we would do is clarify that right in English, and I would send each of you another document. Be written in English if you can, nearby, as opposed to scripted, real credit use is in this one. From there, GMA, your actuaries, and go through and try to extrapolate, but also be able to come back to us. Your initial contribution will be thus, you can anticipate over nine years. That's, that's what's twelve hundred dollars.
And they haven't done this before, or?
They've done it, well, cities, yes, and, and this.
Now, the next question, in my reading, it was my understanding that the retirement fund would have to be when you are, um, vested before you would receive any money, no?
That's the way for employee elected officials, if included in the plan, best the day they're elected. Let's say, and I ask Michelle this specific question. Let's say someone is elected, served four-year term, reads the age, draws retirement to sixty-five at the current time. They would draw a hundred dollars a month, twenty-five dollars for each year that they serve. If that's your mind, then you go, and that's common. Twenty-five dollars. Twenty, twenty. Alright. Three, four.
I would like to note that I don't agree with this expense, either in the study or the, uh, the long-term. I, I believe we should serve out of the interest of the citizens, and that money could be better spent on parks or roads, or any number of other activities. I do agree we work too hard, but I don't think we do it for, but we definitely don't do it for the praise, or the money we currently get. But a small stipend isn't gonna make that change for me. At this time, I'll entertain any motions regarding consideration to approve an expenditure for a city council retirement study. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion from Councilman Johnson, and a second from Councilman Lee regarding approving expenditure for the, got city of Guyton council retirement plan study. All in favor? Any opposed? Nay. Just for the sake of, since I'm the only one miked, uh, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Councilman Reeser, you voted nay. Councilman Palote, you voted yea. I voted nay. Yea and yea. Motion carries. Item I, consideration to approve gym AC repair expense. Mike, this one's all yours. Would someone mic Mike? You're so soft spoken.
I've never been accused of that. We discussed this last week. Uh, there are several different ways to solve this problem. There are two units that feed this building. What is working tonight, and it started earlier this morning, is one twelve-and-a-half-ton unit for refrigerant, and working as an air conditioning unit should. Augmented by the second, uh, unit, which does not, uh, operate in any manner except fan. So what, we've been running it now since before lunch, to get to this point. I mentioned to y'all last week, and I would recommend to you, as you consider, the cost of each unit is some seventeen thousand dollars apiece. If we replace both of them, we have a price where we can fix it for twenty-six thousand. Or we can, we have two prices to repair the one unit that is not working. Uh, that cost is eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. We have, we, we had a quote that was five hundred and twenty-seven dollars less than that. But our insurance company sent us a, what is called a lightning affidavit. If the repairman is willing to say, this damage was solely caused due to lightning and no other cause whatsoever, because, and a licensed technician will sign that, then our insurance company will assist in the part, in the repair. Two low bids to repair, two bids to repair the one unit. A company that was at eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one said they would sign the affidavit. A company that was five hundred dollars less said they could not sign the affidavit. So I recommend to you, we take the eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollar, uh, repair expense with an affidavit, which we will send back to our insurance company, and to get some assistance in this expense. Any questions? There, I think that addresses what you were viewing.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for running down all that information. I think we should approve the, uh, coastal comfort system, eighty-nine-hundred-dollar expense. Actually, let me get the correct amount. The, uh, my concern, just, eh, rather than put an exact dollar amount on it, I'd like to empower the city manager to make this expenditure as the cost of refrigerant fluctuates, as well as the cost of the piece of equipment. It should not be a significant change, but just in case it's a hundred dollars more, fifty dollars less, let's, uh, I'd, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the city manager to approve, uh, expenditure for the gym AC repair. Motion by Mr. Lee, do I, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Johnson, and do I have a second? Second from Mr. Lee, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Let's cool off. Item J, consideration to approve GDOT list of roadways. We discussed this at the workshop, this is a standard list that council must approve for GDOT to adjust radar speeds and stuff due to the roundabout. Are there any questions or concerns? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the GDOT list of roadways. Motion by Councilwoman Palote, second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item K, consideration to allow geocaching in the city of Guyton. Ms. Joyce Lattley was kind enough to come out and present her, uh, box of tricks to council. She reached out to me just recently, uh, and wants to touch base with Ms. Pearl and Ms. Lucy regarding setting up a historical geocaching event, and had a ton of great ideas, uh, including some stuff they do at the city of Blackshear. Uh, she is very excited. But, uh, and she and I, I talked Hilo Trail for thirty minutes, she talked geocaching for thirty minutes, then Amanda maybe go to dinner. So, uh, in that vein, I would like to allow her to start a geocaching system in the city of Guyton with our approval. Normally, they can just hide stuff around the city and do their thing if it's on public property, but she has come forth to ask us for our permission, and I would like to grant it. Are there any questions regarding this? If there's no discussion, I would like to entertain a motion allowing geocaching in the city of Guyton. Motion by Councilwoman Palote, second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Y'all get searching. Item nine, dates to remember. This June seventeenth, this Thursday, from five to seven, the Guyton Historical Commission Summer Social will happen at the caboose across from City Hall. We will have tables, chairs, and free Kona ice for the kids. Please come out, enjoy us. Uh, myself and my pastor will be playing a two-man group. Uh, we promise not to torture you too much, but we have a lot of fun with it, and I think it'll be a good summer social event. And I thank my historical commission for all their hard work. Item B, Tuesday, June twenty-second, will be the planning and zoning meeting here at the gym at seven, if there's any business for that committee. June twenty-third, from one to six, here at the gym with its brand-new windows and pretty little doors, will be the American Red Cross Blood Drive, uh, from one to six on Wednesday, June twenty-third. You can sign up online, it's on the Facebook, uh, there's a link. Please schedule your appointment. This, we're not having as big of a turnout so far, so we would very much like your participation. Um, numerous citizens have reached out in the last few weeks and mentioned their own family's needs for blood, and, and it has been very touching and moving, and, uh, there's a few of the community pages on Facebook where I've seen a mention or two, and it's, it's good. It's neat to see, and if you have the app, it'll actually tell you, it's like your blood's been sent to the VA in Atlanta, and it's just, it's really good, and I'm glad Guyton can be a part of that. Tuesday, July sixth, at seven PM, will be the next city council workshop, right here at the gym, at seven PM on July sixth. At this time, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session referencing litigation, personnel, and property acquisition. Motion by Councilman Reeser, second by Councilwoman Palote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We are in executive session. Thanks, everybody.
Tell me, you better hustle and care before birdies, don't you?
Hey, you guys wanna grab some plates to go? There's a lot of food back there.
Oof, and everyone's looking at my belly.